Okay. Okay, say it one more time, Josh.
Um, Nahum.
I'm sure you guys have been done since we've had a meeting.
But we'll not be offended if you say anything.
No, but I just, I have to say everybody's names sometimes.
They're ready as you go.
Okay.
Now we're quick. Were you here for that one? It's a couple months ago. Maybe it wasn't. Probably a couple. Maybe that's.
Yeah, I think you missed the last one, that's why. We had one the month before that, though.
Yeah, that's why it feels so long.
Yeah.
I think I'm gonna miss one, I don't.
All right. Good evening and welcome to the zoning board of appeals meeting. Today is Wednesday, November 19th, 2025. It is 6:30 PM and I will call this meeting to order. We will start with a roll call. Member Brooks.
Present.
Member Kaden.
Present.
Member Nahum.
Present.
Say it right.
Yeah.
Member Trizeis.
Here.
Chairman Sor is present. All right, with that, we are gonna get right to our agenda. And I'm going to move to approve tonight's agenda.
I will support.
Get by member Trizeis.
Second.
Okay. This is a vote to approve tonight's agenda. Member Brooks?
Uh, yes.
Member Kaden?
Yes.
Member Nahum?
Yes.
Member Trizeis?
Yes.
And Chairman Sor votes yes, so tonight's agenda has been approved. We do not have any minutes to correct or approve for today's meeting, so we move right into communications. We, as a board, received communications from Jonathan Burke from 6074 Columbia regarding ZBA case number 25-10. We also received, in our, outside of the packet today, we received an additional letter from, signed by many members of the community, the Andrews, Davis, McCarthy, Bass, Holinshead, Ulrich, and Doakes Dexter Wright, and I'm very sorry for butchering that name, but that was signed by several members of the neighborhood community for, also regarding the ZBA case number 25-10. We can go into those further during the new business case that's coming up in just a moment. So with that, I will hand it over to Mr. Chapman. Mr. Chapman, we are looking at ZBA case number 25-10.
Yeah, so the applicant intends to construct a building addition and second-story addition to the existing non-conforming single-family dwelling at 6080 Columbia Street. At its closest point, the structure is non-conforming because it's 1.2 feet from the south property line and 2.1 feet from the north side line. And according to assessing records, this property was built, or this house was built in 1936. In 1992, there was a variance granted to add a second-story addition to the non-conforming house. And in 1999, additional variances were granted to add 400-square-foot garage in addition to the non-conforming structure as well as the lot coverage of 42%. The new addition is approximately 322 square feet and is proposed to be added to the east side of the home. Also, the second-story roof is proposed to be raised to even out of the roofline. The resulting increase in area of dwelling requires a variance to expand a non-conforming single-family structure pursuant to section 86-6181. The light glancing, uh, overlay district requires a minimum insider setback of five feet. At its closest point, the addition and second-story addition encroach two feet and 2.1 feet respectively into the setback. So two foot and 2.1 feet variances requested. Also, section 86-4424 allows 40% maximum lot coverage. Previously, in 1999, the variance that was granted allowed for 42% lot coverage. However, when constructed, it only ended up covering 40.4% of the lot. The proposed additions would cover 43.7% of the lot. So, uh, a variance to exceed the maximum allowed lot coverage by 1.7% is requested. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chapman. Would the applicant or the applicant's representative like to come up and speak on this case?
I can, yeah. She's on her way, she's on her way.
Okay. Yep, if you want to come on up. Uh, state your name and the address for the public record, please.
Yep, Taylor Teachout, I'm the contractor for the project.
Thanks.
Um, so we're just applying for this. She just purchased this home about a year ago and looking to kind of make it her own. The swim spa off the back. She has a few kids that live with her and just looking to overall clean up the house. So she's gonna have us vinyl sided. Currently, it's all wood and a lot of it's kind of rotted and nasty. So just trying to clean up the house. And, yeah, I wasn't prepared to speak, so sorry.
Oh, that's okay, we appreciate that you're here.
Any questions you have, I'd be free to, yeah.
Um, I think, um, in light of that, I will kind of get through public comment a bit and then let the applicant. Usually, we like to let the applicant speak first.
She's on her way, just yet.
I totally realize we have to stick with our timeline. But, Mr. Teachout, if you don't mind, we may have questions when we get into our board time, so stick around and if we need to call you, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We need to call you back up, we will. So I am going to, since the applicant is not here to speak on the case, I will go ahead and ask for any members of the community that would like to come up to speak on this case. Are welcome to come up and do so. Please, I would ask anybody from the audience that are public, that wants to come up and speak. They keep their comment brief. We also cannot have a back and forth because that won't allow our board to be, conduct their business the way that we need to conduct our business. So you're welcome to come up and make a statement. We are not going to engage or have any answers for questions, but I do hope that you can respect our process. If I need to, I will institute our three-minute rule, but I do hope that everybody keeps their comments brief so we can keep our cases moving. We have three cases tonight, so we'd like to keep Meridian Township efficient and moving along. So with that being said, anybody who would like to come up can come up to the podium. You will just have to give your name and address for the public record, and we'd love to hear what you have to say.
Good evening.
Hi there. Ma'am, if you don't mind stating your name and address for the public record, that would be great.
Pardon?
You're just, we want to give your name and address for the public record, so we know who was in attendance.
I just wanted to pass out a picture of what we're talking, not what we're talking about, what I'm ready to be talking about. Yes, my name is Lily G. I live at 6068 Columbia Street, which is four houses away from the applicant's house. When the site was developed 100 years ago, there are streets that come in that end at the lake. And between each block, there's approximately six houses. And Columbia is the main street that goes along the lakefront. The first group of houses is between Pike and Bass. The one I live on is between Bass and Perch, and that is where the applicant's house is. The houses were built about 100 years ago and are updated cottages. For my house, I am only, my husband and I are the only fourth owners, so there have not been a lot of changes to our house. Originally, when the houses were developed, the setback was three feet or six feet between the houses. The applicant was given, the house was given several variances. Was at one point, it is only five and a half feet between the houses. I'm 5'3", that means it's three inches wider than me. And from the picture, you will see plantings and shrubs. Let's say a rose bush comes to here, a shrub comes to here. That means essentially, from my hip down to the ground is the distance between the houses. I feel that granting any lessening of the setback is a fire hazard. There have been house fires around the lake. The first one is right across the street from my house. The house burned down, there's a vacant lot. Then going back toward Pike Street, three houses away, the house burned down, and there are now two new houses there that are located at 6054 and 6056 Columbia Street. Lee Regal's house is on West Lake. It burned down approximately six years ago, and that led to some fire damage to Gil White's house, which is 6005 East Lake. There was a house that's next to the boat ramp. The garage burned down approximately about eight years ago. That house, the house was turned down, torn down, and then a new house was built. So fires do happen, and if you live in Meridian Township and you were outside last week, you know there are high winds in this area. And with high winds, with the houses so close by, I feel that granting any lessening of a setback is, would cause a possibility of a fire spreading to other houses. I am sorry that other variances were granted that lessen the width, and I am hoping that you do not grant any variance that involves lessening the width between houses.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Okay, anybody else that would like to come up and speak on this case?
Uh, me, Elmore.
Thank you, we were, I opened public comment as we were waiting for you, so please come on up and we just need your name and address for the public record, please.
Sure, sure. I am Teresa Wilborn, and I live at where my home I own, 6080 Columbia Street in Hazzard, Michigan. All right, so, um, in order to, I guess, fulfill, I guess, the optimal space, I guess, for the home, we're not asking, or I think the requests are not encroaching on any of the neighbor's property. It's pretty much just pretty much my own. In the additional space that we're asking for the back is where the previous owner had put tons of dirt from basement that they dug up. So I guess in order to make it a bit more safe and a true yard, just asking for that piece of property to go back a little bit further than what it currently is. The other variance is to, it's currently like a cottage slope for the roof and the second floor. So just looking to bump that out a bit to make more optimal use of that space, because right now it's not a usable space. The other variances, as far as the side yard again, again, a previous variance was allowed for that, but the additional that we're asking for is not that big of a setback, so. And the adverse effects, actually, is literally low and very low risk to house fire spreading. Because the property line would be nowhere near the fence, nor would it be encroaching on any of our neighbors' properties.
Okay. All right. Ms. Wilborn, if you would, uh, be, we'll continue our public comment, and then when public comment is over, we go into our board time, we may have questions for you, so we may just ask you, or Mr. Teachout, we know is here as well, so we can also ask either one of you to come back up if we have any questions, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Okay, thank you so much. Anybody else that would like to discuss or have, has a public comment? Not, pardon me, not discuss, public comment regarding this case can come up to the podium. State your name and address for the public record, please.
My name is Katie Davis. I live at 6082 Columbia Street, the property north of the property in question. Several neighbors and I had concerns. We put our heads together on the concerns after seeing the architectural rendering in addition to the footprint that's up here. Like, we've noticed that the property is kind of on an angle along with the property lines, and it's very tight between, especially, well, in both sides. When the garage addition was built to the street, it required a, it looks like to me that required a retaining wall, and that retaining wall was built on, to the north of that property line, which is on my property. So the retaining wall for the garage is on my property. So it's already encroaching into my property for those, for these prior additions. So like, was mentioned that there's only 2.1 feet on that side, and then there's only 1.2 feet on the other side. My concern is for the construction activity and the construction access. I know Bridget McCarthy, who is here tonight, is also, is the owner of the property on the south side. She has all-new retaining walls and, and rocks on that side and, and doesn't want any egress across her property. And my property, there, like I said, there's that retaining wall there. It's probably, it slopes, it continues to go down in height, but it's, it's probably about four to five feet at the highest. So not really quite sure how the, any construction equipment would get back between there without some sort of, I'm just not sure how, what the construction access would look like. Ms. Wilborn expressed that she wants to remove the dirt from the lakeside, which is on the east side of the property, and with two feet on one side and one foot on another side, I'm not sure how that would happen. Looking at, um, the architectural rendering, it all, there appears to be exit well on that north side that would extend, the well, I believe, would extend to my property line or to, to the property line or to, which could be a safety hazard along the property line. Currently, there's a walkway there, not a well. I don't really know what that will look like as far as how far that well will go out. There's also shrubbery between the two houses on the north side, between the lake and the deck, and, um, concern for the shrubs, the privacy shrubs to stay intact during construction.
Ma'am, we're at about one minute and, or, I'm sorry, three minutes and 40 seconds with your comment. If you could conclude your statement, that would be really helpful for our timeline.
The addition to the basement appears that it's coming out towards the lake, and the current deck is at a certain height, and that deck above the basement appears that it's gonna be higher than the original deck, which would be a line-of-sight issue as well as if they ever built above that basement in the future, which would, um, is a concern about just the property values of all of us for the line-of-sight issue and the dwelling closer and closer, dwellings closer and closer to the lake. And also, the, the swim spa with a mechanical room and pumps and that kind of thing is a concern for the noise for people out on their decks that are currently there. So, um, I think, just in conclusion, we just would please like to deny this request.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else that would like to make a comment this evening? I just asked what we remember in our timeline and keeping within that three minutes, that would be very helpful.
My name is John Ulrich. I live on 6054 Columbia Street. And basically, this property has already had two variances deviating from the five-foot setbacks. And now we're going to take it further? I don't think that's good business. It's not good for the neighborhood. They have a basement window that they're gonna use as an emergency exit. That's not even identified as how deep that is going to be. Because to get egress out of that window, the person's gonna have to walk out, climb out the window, and then up either a ladder or whatever. So that means that's gonna extend even further into her property than what they're proposing. Because it's not, there's no dimensions on the, on the layout. And I've seen those exit windows before, and they take a lot of room in order to get somebody out safely in case of a fire. That's it.
Thank you very much, sir, we appreciate you. All right, anybody else that would like to speak on this case this evening?
Hi, there's, um.
We're not, I, I'm sorry, I gave my, my rules earlier. We're not going back and forth in, in our public comment. All of the public is welcome to come and give their comment. The board will not be engaging with the public, and I would hope that we could keep it respectful in our, in the meeting. You all are neighbors, so you can talk at home all you want. You can just debate at home all you want. Within our board space, we're gonna have a respectful conversation, and we'll just keep going. So we can talk to you, Ms. Wilborn, about it, and if we have questions about what was mentioned, we can discuss it with you, okay? Thank you very much. All right. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this case this evening? All right. I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment, and I will open up our board time. So at this point, for you, Ms. Wilborn, and for Mr. Teachout, if we have questions, we'd love for you to come up so we can have a conversation in case we have any questions, so. Any board member that would like to jump in? Has any questions or comments? Member Trizeis, go ahead.
Well, kind of going in reverse order this time, so some of the questions is what I would have asked earlier.
Right, right.
Like, I'm not real good at reading charts and drawings, so if someone could explain what's being changed, what's being proposed, what's being added.
That would be helpful.
That would be helpful.
Is that Mr. Teachout or Mr. Chapman might wanna chime in with what, what, what we're adding? Because I think that's a really helpful question as far as what's, what's changing? Because I also have a question regarding that. And where the, my question to, to piggyback off Member Trizeis's question is, where the roofline comes into, is that part of, Mr. Chapman, the coverage? Is that part of the percentage?
No, well, I mean, it's part of the house, which is part of it. That is an increase.
That is, so, we take this into pieces, right? Roofline being one, and the, the swim spa being a second piece, right?
Correct.
The roof has nothing to do with the variance? Or do they need the variance?
No, they need the variance because it's in the setback.
It's in the setback.
And they're increasing the height of the house by adding that addition to that roof, like raising the roof up, basically.
Raising the roof is part of this, this side yard setback?
It's on the north, yes. The north side yard setback.
Okay.
So there's the, the five foot on the north, the five foot on the south.
Okay, thank you, that, that picture's helpful. Okay, that's my question, but I will let Member Trizeis get back to his question.
Just on, on the drawing there, could you tell me what's being added and what, where the old house is and that sort of?
Sure, so from the, the house, the drawing, the original house is where it says, well, the 12-inch brick wall, that's where the, the deck currently is on the house. So anything beyond the 12-foot brick wall is where the addition is gonna occur, so. And that's between the number, is it three? And then the six, they're on the, um, on the, the south side. The roof piece, I don't think that's properly reflected in this drawing. It's probably in the overall sign.
Yeah, there's another, there's another rendering that has a better.
The one that you saw is the one. It basically takes the roof that's like this. Because what happens is in the master, you, you know, it's 10 feet away, but you can't get to it.
You're right, it's basically unusable space that's currently there, and it's like, um, there's like a column there. And then the master bathroom has like a wood panel window, which is basically unusable because of how the current structure is, I guess, there's the roof there aligned there is blocking that window. So they just put a piece of plywood in there. So I guess just for optimal views and just to be proper use of the room, just wanted to bump that up a few. And it doesn't seem to conflict or restrict any view from that by raising that roof that I can see. There's no view from the lake currently from that angular view of the house. So bumping it up just a few more inches shouldn't have that much of an impact, from my understanding. For that piece.
So the roof isn't being extended beyond where it currently?
No, it's not being extended. No, it's just lifting up.
I'm sorry, we are not, we are not going to do that. I apologize that I didn't make myself clear. The public comment is over. You cannot shout at a member or at the board from the audience.
I apologize. I didn't mean to be.
No, that's okay. But we, we are, we are not going to have, I, that's, that's, we, I'm sorry. But public comment is the time that you get to make a statement. But now is the time for the board to communicate with the, with the applicant, the applicant's representative, and staff.
Will there be an opportunity to ask questions?
There will not. That is not part of our, part of our structure. We, you are welcome to give another comment at the end. We do have, will have additional public comment at the end. But we can, we are, we are open to ask questions of the applicant. But unfortunately, we cannot have a open discussion that way. That's just not how we're formatted. So my question is, just so I'm clear, it's, it's more difficult with this. I'm, I'm asking only because I'm a visual person. Do you have any photographs or anything that you can show us that will help us to better visualize? Because I'm looking at this and I'm, the east elevation is what faces the lake.
Right. I have it on my phone, the, the, the drawing. And let me see if he actually put on there the actual height of the roof before and after.
Because that, that visual of the, the roof being raised helps me understand the
That you have it.
The, the side yard setback. Yeah. But I'm curious.
I mean, I can send it to Keith, too.
Oh, great. Okay.
So that's from the lake.
Okay. I wonder if, yeah, if Keith can.
Here you go.
I'll send it in.
I think that, yep, he's going to switch on our camera here at the podium. Here you go. Yep.
So.
Thank you.
You can see, so that's the bedroom right here. As you can see, though, from approximately there to the corner, it's unusable. There's a beam in that bedroom. So we would literally be raising this section here up seven and a half feet.
Okay. And that's in the setback. Got it.
Just raising it straight up?
Correct.
Can you do that one more time? Sorry, there's a big thing on the screen.
Yeah, sorry.
On the setback.
Well, I, it's in the setback.
It's in setback now, but it's not a further incursion?
It's not any further.
Okay. Yeah, we're not, we're not going this way at all.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's literally just tearing that off and we're going straight up here. And so this roof, instead of it being so steep, would be more shallow.
I got you.
Yep. Just to create more of a, yeah, this whole section is just, you know, you can see the height. It's not great.
So our ordinance, the way that it reads, any increase in the, you know, the nonconformity requires a, a variance?
I understand that, but you also talked about narrowing the setbacks. And where does that
Right.
Get in?
Yeah. So I think what one of them had mentioned was the window well on the side of the property. I don't know if you have that, Keith. Hold on one sec. Yes, sir. So those stick, those stick out from the building three feet. That is what, I mean, we can shrink that if needed be. You tell me, Teresa, I mean.
Yeah, we can.
We just want everyone to get along. I don't want to like argue, so I'm trying to be.
I'm just trying to get information.
Please, no, ours, ours comes from, we, we are coming from a place of curiosity. And trying to do the best to make the best decision for the township. So we, we will do our due diligence to make sure we ask as many questions as possible. It is not personal. It is just us trying to get information so we can make the best choice possible. But I think, you know, I, I, here, everybody wants to get along. Everybody wants to make sure they can live peacefully in their, in their home with their neighbors. So that's, I mean, and we, we can get into that a little bit more as a board in a few when we look at our criteria. But I think the, I, I'm, yeah. I'm trying to, I, I try to formulate some questions, guys, so. Anybody has a, has a?
And the plot of survey was done before he did the drawing. So again, new to the area. So when he did the drawing, I assume he stayed within my property line. And also left a few inches so that we can have a walkway. The current walkway, from my understanding, would still exist. So that didn't look like it, you know, intruded or required the removal of the existing walkway with that window well. That was my understanding.
Okay, thank you. All right. Board members, anybody have any further questions? I know this is a.
So the window well would be on the north side, just east of the garage.
Correct.
So it's, looks like steps here.
Right.
Okay.
Because there's, there's steps presently there, so those steps will remain.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask it because I hope that there's a, a good answer for it. But if the variance that exists is, has that 42%, they can use up to that 42%, right? But the challenge is we're going to that 43.7%.
Right, it's just 1.7 over there.
Okay. So question I would have for you, Ms. Wilborn, and Mr. Teachout. Why not stay within that 2%? Why that additional 1.7%? Because when we get into our criteria, we're going to look at what is the minimum action to help to alleviate the, you know, the constraints of the, of the ordinance? And that's going to be, I, I know, I know these guys really well. That's going to be something they're all going to ask a lot of. So I'm just going to ask it straight up. Why not build within that 2%? What are, what are we looking at that is an addition that, that can't be done within that, within that 2%? Because I think you're at 40.7?
Yeah.
40.7.
40.7? So what can we not do within that? Yeah, 40.4.
So 43.7 is what they would.
43.7 is what you're looking for. But the variance already allows up to 42, and they're only using 40.4.
Current.
Right, currently, so.
So it's 1.6 roughly? What is that square footage wise, based off of that lot? Do we know that or is that, sorry?
I don't teach complex math.
I know, I'm sorry.
I teach elementary school. We teach addition. That's a Mr. Chapman question.
Yes, the breakdown is it.
There is a, there is a chart, I know. But I, I'm curious what that, what that looks like and why we, why it landed on that. As opposed to, I mean, did we, did we look at alternative ways to get there? Do we look at what we could do to keep it within that variance? Because our job really is to grant as few variances as humanly possible. Right. So if we're looking at, we need to say yes to the side yard setback because you're going to raise your roof, which, you know, I, I could probably start to make a case for practical difficulties with raising a roof. But if we're looking at, we need to grant for, you know, additional square footage or additional coverage percentage, we're going to need a compelling reason why we're going from 40.4 to 43.7 when you're allowed to be in the 42 range already without granting an additional variance. When we're already at, 35 is the maximum, and we're already at 40.4. And why are we bumping it up an additional 3.3?
I have a question. To me, it looks very minimal to go from 40.4 to 43.7. Looks like it's only adding, what, 173? Is that correct, square feet? So to go to 42%, you're adding another, what, 85? Yeah. Sorry.
You'd be reducing by 85.
Yeah, to get to the 42. And then that would keep everyone happy.
We would need to have a variance.
There would be no variance.
There would be no variance necessary, that's my point. So is, is, so that 85 square feet.
That's what I'm asking, is that, that the deal breaker?
For y'all, that's what I'm saying. Is that, is that a necessary?
There are other issues.
Right, there are other issues. That's, that's one. That's, that's, you know, because we have to go through the, we have to go through the criteria. So one of ours is minimum action. And that's, that's where, that's where my question comes. That's, that's, there, a couple of thoughts came up as listening to this case and listening to, to you present it. And that's where, that's where my, one of my biggest questions lies. My second lies in why it's necessary. I, I can hear definitely, I can hear the roof line. Beyond that, I'm, the, the necessity of the practical difficulties. So being, being an unusable dwelling is where we get into our next kind of hurdle we have to cross to.
Would that, I can take it back to the architect and see, can we maneuver it to make it within the current variance that's already approved?
Yeah.
That's not a problem.
Okay. I think, I think that would, would satisfy some of our board kind of thoughts and curiosities. But.
For that variance.
For that variance, right. For the, for the percentage. I think the side yard setback is, is the next challenge.
I just want to clarify
Yes.
That it says base zoning allows 35%. The overlay allows 40, so.
Okay, so, so they're, so they're at where they
Right.
Where they're supposed to be. They have the variance for 42, so they could go to 42.
Correct.
So, I mean, I, yes, is, is 1.7% above what they already have been granted? Is that a small amount? Sure. But they already have a variance. So we, so the board has already granted that variance. And
I guess.
We talk about it a lot. It stays with the house. We, we talk about it a lot. Every time we grant one, it stays with the house. So it's, it's
Stays with the property.
Stays with the property, not the house, yeah.
You wrecked the house, they could rebuild 42%.
Right, right. Okay. Board members have any other thoughts or are we ready to get into criteria?
I had just one clarifying question.
Member Kane, go ahead.
Keith. One of the variances they're requesting is two foot even. Where is that two foot? I was trying to find, I see the 2.1, but where is the two even?
It's on the south side.
Right side, right up by the.
So that's the, the corner of the swim spa area on the south.
Could you zoom into that?
Yes, sorry.
What's that say there now? Does that say two feet?
It says three feet. Yeah. So there are going to be two feet in that setback. So five foot, so. Yeah.
And then the 2.1 is on the other side where it says 2.9.
Correct.
Gotcha, that's what I was thinking. Is it possible to build in between these houses without impact being within the setback?
What do you mean?
So like, if somebody wanted to build a fence in between the two houses, wouldn't they be within the?
So there's actually a section in this for the Lake Lansing overlay that you can only build up till three feet in height within, I think it's seven feet of a structure.
Yeah, it's two feet.
Yeah, two feet, yeah. So you can, it'd just be really small.
Yeah. Interesting place.
We thought we were done with Lake Lansing. They just keep pulling us back in.
That's what I was going to say, Madam Chair, is that, you know, this isn't our first variance request that we've seen around the lake. And the lake definitely is the bane of this township. Because every time there's something that comes to the township that needs a variance around the lake, there's variances being asked, there's neighbors that come out against it because if you look at, if you look at an arrow, like you guys have seen, every one of these houses around the lake are so close to its neighbor that somebody's going to get angry with something somewhere. So it's, it's very difficult for anyone who owns a property there to do anything, especially if they're trying to go beyond because there's just no room.
There's no space, yeah.
And that's, that's something that I hope that if variances like this keep coming up, that the township would eventually go, wait a minute here.
Well, we have.
This is our, this is our 20th variance and, you know, maybe we ought to look at this a little bit more.
I will say, we have, yeah, we have, because that was, that was a big challenge. And we've gone to planning and Peter knows.
Yep.
We went through planning, we got some, that Lake Lansing overlay, kind of a more robust overlay district to assist with some of that. But we're still at a point where, you know, we, we still have a lot of nonconforming homes. And Ms. Wilborn's home is a perfect case of that and built in 1936. So there's not, you know, this, this, I, I mean, I could, we could make the, the case for uniqueness for every Lake Lansing home. Each one has its own circumstances that is challenging. That is for sure.
It is disturbing to me, I should, I should say, looking at this. And we heard from the audience member that if it's true, the retaining wall was built at the same time as the garage in 99 or whenever they built it. Did they, I mean, they obviously had to submit a permit for that. Was the township okay with allowing whoever it was to put that retaining wall on the other property?
That, that's a great question.
Very interesting that they would allow that
I don't know.
Without going to the other property owner and saying, hey, you know, I have a lot of room. We need to get on your property. Are you okay with that?
Right.
So I don't know, I don't, you know, I can't go back and forth with you. But I don't know if that was even asked because this was, that was 25 years ago.
Exactly, yeah.
Looking at that, it's kind of a head scratcher going, hmm.
Like, how did that happen? That's, that's a great question.
And, and it does bring up a good question as well, as far as, you know, there's going to be some pretty big pieces of lumber and stuff going back there. How do you plan on bringing that back to that backside of the property through those? Because like both sides of the lots, like any other lot, it's very tight. So how do you plan on getting big pieces of construction equipment and stuff back there?
Yeah, there's an existing walkway. We'd bring everything back through there, but, yeah.
You'll be able to fit it all through there? One board at a time?
Yes. Sorry, quick question. I sent a photo to Keith, but, so the walkway that's on the north side that has, you know, the, the like, the brick cobbles going up. So that's the place where you're planning on putting a new window well, right? How far will the window well extend into that walkway? Like, because they need to be, you know, out from the wall, considered. Like, are you still going to be able to use that as a, a working pathway with the window well there?
Yeah, so it's three feet. It'd be very minimal, but there will be, yes.
How wide is the walkway, do you know?
I mean, it's just over three feet. It's very close to that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's right next to the house.
The problem is if, when you look at the plans, the basement being finished, it's more of a, that's more of a safety concern than using the walkway there.
Being, being able to have that egress?
Yeah, that's the, there's a, I'm sure it's, there's a print that shows the basement being finished and the reason for that. If you go, there should be a basement, like a actual basement.
Oh, that's unactual.
Yeah, it's ungood, yeah, it's all right.
I can look at them, but.
It's, I mean, it's up to you guys.
The, the existing basement? It's on page two of the drawing.
But he didn't, they don't have, yeah.
Oh, they don't have it? That looks like they do.
This is just the last page, I think, the architectural drawing of it.
Okay.
Oh, you only gave me the last page. I have the whole thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. Member Kane, go ahead.
I can.
Okay, show us, yeah.
I can make it bigger. So this is the existing.
Can you adjust the brightness maybe? That's hilarious.
It's so white.
It's so bright.
Uh, he didn't do, uh, I'm sure you can.
Oh, there we go.
There it is.
Just get a bit closer to it.
So this is the. So this is the, the demo part of it, but, um, I'm not sure if he's showing the walkway here, but this is in the inside. This is the current basement window. And then here is the current walkway where you see the steps. He doesn't have the actual dimension, but I think it's at least, it doesn't seem like it's that small from the house, the existing one. And it's, it's a bit away from the house, so it's not like right up on the house.
The drawing we have, it shows it's three foot, four inches or something like that.
Yeah.
And it's, there may be a small gap between it and the house.
Is it like a sa, a safety concern, just putting, I guess, what is the? The reason for why it's, is that what you're get?
Well, I just wanted to make sure that, that how close it was getting to the property line and if you'd still have access. Because the walkway on the south side, I believe, belongs to the neighbor, right? The, um, the one that has like the loose rocks.
Hmm, I haven't, I haven't looked at the plot of survey. I, that's news to me.
Oh, no, I, I'm not, I'm not making a statement. That was a question.
Yeah, that's a question to me too, because we did the, when we did the plot of survey, we made sure that, I, he should have made sure that he drew within the lines of the existing property lines. So there's nowhere where that's indicated that the current, the garage, and I think there's like a little bit of, um, some rocks right there, and it's like a step you go down. It's very close to the neighbors. I mean, I see some of her plants on my, on the side, so, but nowhere in the plot of survey did it say that that was on her property.
Oh, so the both walkways on either side of your house belong to you, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay.
So tech, so they could use either one.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to.
Yeah, I, I think I'm, I'm following the line of, line of thinking next, just that there is, despite the egress on one side, that there would still be ability to, to walk.
Right.
Around the house on the other. So there is space between.
The drawing I'm looking at doesn't show a walkway on the south side. Which side is the retaining?
Um, if you look at the plot map, like, you can see a walkway. That's kind of towards, uh, the, the end of the first case.
All right.
Um, that, I can, I can see on that, uh, that Google image, that it, there's a, there's kind of a, uh.
A walkway.
Stone kind of rock path.
Yeah.
It's kind of, it's more like a, there's some stones, and then there's like a wood step to go down.
They also make covers for the window wells that are, you know, that can be lifted off, that you're able to stand on, so that, you know, again, that was.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
North is where the egress is?
Hmm.
Yeah. Okay. Yes. Member Kane, go ahead.
Just for clarification, I'm pretty sure I know the answer, but just for clarification, Mr. Chapman, if you wouldn't mind. The, your staff report says that the existing structure, closest point right now to the south side is one point two feet.
Correct. Yeah.
They're asking for a variance with the new structure on the south side of two feet.
Correct. Yes.
So technically, the existing structure would remain closer to the south side property line than the new structures being built.
That is correct.
So again, remind us, why are they, why do they need to ask for variance on that side of the property?
So it's still within that five feet of that setback there.
Okay.
So it's less.
Yes. So.
The house is on an angle.
Thank you for that clarification. I'm, I kind of figured that's what your answer is. Um, same with the, with the north side property is currently, or the structure, as I say, is currently two point one feet.
Correct.
They're asking for two point one feet.
Yes.
So the, so it won't go any farther than what's currently allowed. So my point, what I'm getting at is, I personally, I, I understand where members of the public and the neighbors are coming from. I do. But I understand that as well, looking at this, the setbacks themselves are not getting any bigger. Nothing structure-wise, it's going to be more closer to the property lines on the north and the south than it currently is. I do have questions, and you probably read my, she was looking at me. I did have the same type of question of wondering if there was a way to stay within the forty-two percent lot coverage. Um, and I didn't know, I, I didn't do the math in my head and work out the square footage, what that would equate to. But, you know, you saw it, it's somewhere around a hundred square feet or something. Um, but I, I personally, you know, my opinion, I'm just one vote. I don't necessarily have an issue with the setbacks, because they're, they're not going to get any bigger than what they already are, non-conforming. And I know that it's not going to make everybody happy. And I know they already have variance for those things. And what's, you know, and here we are, another variance. I understand that. But the variance isn't getting, in my mind, isn't getting any bigger. That's where I would have an issue with it. The lot coverage is getting bigger. And that's where I have potentially the issue. It's just, is there a way to make that lot coverage smaller, so that you can stay within that variance? So I just wanted to put that on the record. And I'm glad you clarified that. I knew that was in, I knew that's what you were going to say, but I just wanted to make sure everyone understood is.
Yes.
When they see that and they go, wait a minute, why are they requesting this variance when it's not going to be as far as what the current structure is? And that's why, because they're still within that setback.
Yeah, which was my question about the roof line. That's why I said, what?
Yep. And it doesn't appear.
Because we're still within the setback. That's, that's why.
And it doesn't appear that the roof, the new roof is going to be any taller than the existing roof. It's going to be the same height, correct?
Same height. You're just bringing up the pitch to match the opposite side.
Correct. Yeah.
Got it. Yeah.
So it's not like the building is going to necessarily get any taller.
Right.
It's just the additional square foot on the backside because of that additional structure piece.
And that's, that was my thing. I know there's one that was worried about fires. We're not, you know, there's already a structure that we're not going towards any.
We're not pushing out.
Well, and if I owned a property on the lake like this, even without you wanting to do anything, I would be worried about fires, because every one of these houses are so close to each other.
They're so close together.
But unfortunately, you know, that's how they were built. What can you do about it unless you want to tear it down and build something smaller, which nobody wants to do? So it's, it's kind of hope and pray that nothing like that ever happens. But, you know, that's all speculation at this point. We can't say somebody's house is going to get on fire and somebody isn't. Um, but that was the, the questions, the points that I had, Mrs. Chair. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions or are we ready to tackle the criteria? Any other, um, thoughts? I'm gonna, I, I think, um, the way that I'd like to approach it, because I think that, um, Member Kane is on to exactly my train of thought, is that I'd, I'd like to try to approach the two variances separately. Um, if that's okay with you gentlemen, I'm going to take it that way, because I have a, I can see them, see them as two different issues. So I'd like, if, uh, that's, that's cool with you guys, I'm going to try that. Okay. So regarding, um, the side yard setbacks, so that's section eighty-six, uh, four, four, two, five B. That, uh, criteria number one is that unique circumstances exist that are peculiar to the land or structure that are not applicable to other land or structures in the same zoning district, and these unique circumstances are not self-created. I, I know, I, I know I say it a lot, and I, that everyone is unique makes none of them unique. However, this is, um, uh, every time I look at Lake Lansing, I'm like, how did these get built? I have no idea. Um, I do believe that this, uh.
Pre-zoning.
It's a mess. It's a mess. Um, but it exists. And Ms. Wilborn did not create this. Uh, she, she bought this house that, and that came with these variances, that came with the structure, that came with these, um, unique circumstances. So I, um, I can make a case for unique circumstances. Anybody have challenges with that in regards to the setbacks?
No. I, but I'm just looking at the applicant's, uh, unique circumstance.
Yeah.
And they claim a mound of dirt in the backyard, which was created by a prior owner. I don't believe that would qualify as a unique circumstance.
Yeah.
It's a lot itself that could qualify, because it is so small.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with that. And I think that, to me, the unique circumstances regarding the setbacks are that this, um, this, this property exists as it was when she bought it. But it's come, it, it's, it's, it began its life as non-conforming in nineteen thirty-six. So we're looking at nearly a hundred-year-old, um, you know, uh, situation. And I would agree.
It may have conformed in nineteen thirty-six.
It may have conformed in nineteen thirty-six, but it was, yeah. But clearly in nineteen ninety-one, during the first variance, it didn't conform, nor in nineteen ninety-nine. And here we are, another thirty years later, and it's still non-conforming. So, um, I can reach that circumstance regardless of the, the dirt, Ms. Wilborn. Which is probably very inconvenient, but not unique.
Okay.
Uh, all right. Uh, number two is that strict interpretation and enforcement of the literal terms and provisions of this chapter would result in practical difficulties that would prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose. As Member Kane pointed out, we are not, she's not shifting, the setbacks are not growing. They are staying where they are. They're, we're not, we're not encroaching any further on the setbacks. The setbacks are what they are. We're working within what, what the setbacks currently are. That said, I do think that strict interpretation of this ordinance would not allow her to change the house in any way, shape, or form, which, again, is, is definitely a challenge for the neighbors. However, everybody in this neighborhood that wants to do something on their house then has the same challenge. Is that every house is so close together. Could I find a practical difficulty with that? If they want to do anything to the house, it's, it's new siding, right? It's a roof line. It's things that they're doing that are normal, but, I, I mean, I'm, I'm taking out any of the, the percentage and talking just about the, the setbacks. So those things that are, that she needs approval for, that are within the setbacks, are things that are pretty normal maintenance on a hundred, nearly a hundred-year-old house. I, I can, I can make a case for practical difficulties for tho, for those setbacks. I think, based on the fact that they're not getting any larger, they're staying where they are, we're still within what the house already, so it, the house as is right now is not going to change those setbacks. Member Kane.
One can argue that the addition of a swim spa on the property would not restrict the property owner from using it for a permitted purpose, which is a single-family house. However, the current shape of that house, there was a case on the record that it is putting a restriction on what the property owner can use inside that house. And it's not forcing her, but in order to be able to use that room, rooms, as she stated, the bedroom and the bathroom, um, she feels the need that there needs to be construction to be able to raise that roof line. So there is, one could be argued that there is some difficulties on that structure just because of the previous shape of it. Uh, that doesn't mean that the previous owner had it the same problems. It doesn't mean a new owner would have the same problems. But that's, this is, that's what's in front of us today, is that there's an issue with the current owner being able to use that to her ability. Therefore, she feels the need that she has to do something with that to improve that. So that could be seen as a practical difficulty with that current structure, being that it's ninety-seven years old.
I could definitely accept that argument.
Swim spa, that's a different story.
Yeah.
But it is part of the petition, but.
Right. Um, however, I'm, I, I think, to me, the swim spa almost falls more on the coverage, because it's addition, right?
It is. It's not within the five feet setback, or it's not within, it's not going to be creating the setback something even smaller from the side.
Right. Right.
It is a permitted use.
I would hope so, though it is not a required. You'd be asking Keith.
Right.
Keith does his job over there. Sorry. I'm speaking, I turned my phone.
No, you're good. He is, he does a good job.
I'm rambling. Sorry.
You can, you can go with it. All right. Any other questions or thoughts on practical difficulties on criteria two? Okay, I think we can, we could probably make the case for that, um, as Member Kane stated. And criteria number three is granting the variance as the minimum action necessary, which would carry out the spirit of the zoning ordinance, secure public safety, and provide substantial justice. Again, if we're, if we're talking about just for setbacks, I do think a minimum action is allowing the setbacks to stay where they are. We're not granting more. You're not building it out where you're within inches. We're talking about keeping it the same. So still building within that same footprint, not going out, I can, um, you know, we, we like as minimum as possible. So if it's no addition to the setbacks, I do find that that's, um, I could find that to be a minimum action. Any thoughts on criteria number three? Other than taking away and slimming down the house, which we would still need, we would still need a variance. It's still in the setback. Yes, Member Kane.
My only question, and I apologize if you mention it, and I didn't hear it. Um, that's bound to happen in my, sometimes. Um, but I didn't really hear, I understand the reason for going to the forty-three percent, or forty-three point seven, because of the addition of the swim spa, and you're stretching the covered part, I assume, over that, over the top of the swim spa. I didn't, what I didn't hear is the really compelling reason of why it needs to be big, that's so big to need forty-three point seven feet. If you were to say, and maybe you did, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but if you said, you know, the swim spa is a certain size, you know, push it up against the house, as far back as it can go, in order to be all covered, to be out of the weather, we need a deck or covering that's a certain size, and that certain minimum size is going to equate to forty-three, forty-three point seven percent.
I'm going to make you wait on, don't answer that yet, because we're only talking about setbacks.
Oh, you're right. Sorry. I am on a line. Never mind.
Pause. Pause.
Never mind that. Remind them. Strike that out in the minutes for that part.
Don't listen in for a moment.
We will come back to that. You're right. I'm sorry.
No, um, that's okay. Um, but just on minimum action for the setbacks only. Is there any other thoughts on setbacks only minimum action? Okay. Criteria number four is granting the variance will not adversely affect adjacent land or the essential character in the vicinity of the property. Thoughts, concerns on this criteria? Are we able to meet this criteria?
I mean, I don't, I think when I, I looked at some of these houses on Google Maps, and I don't really know how you could actually modify any of these
Right.
without going by the other houses. So it just makes me feel like, it's, I guess I feel like you have to talk to your neighbors and be considerate of people who you live close to, and work within those means, given the situation that we have here.
Yeah. Yeah, they're, I mean, they're already there, you know? It's like, it's already, it's our, it's, what is existing there now? And I, I feel for the neighbors that are, you know, the houses are close together, right? Um, anyone that wanted to put new siding, that wanted to change a roof line, that wanted to add a retaining wall, or do any kind of deck improvement or anything, you are right on top of each other. And this makes for very tense situations, and we, we, um, have dealt with a lot of tense situations here with Lake Lansing. And I, I do, I, I very much understand the concerns, the fire safety, absolutely. That is also why, you know, those setbacks come with those, those non-combustible materials. I mean, there's, there's a reason that, that the township has requested that. Um, you know, I heard, um, one gentleman talk about the egress. And, you know, I believe you addressed that. It's, it needs to be large enough to be able to get somebody out. And that, you know, if that impacts the walkway, you have the access on the other side to be able to get around the house. So, um, I hope that, um, what Member Brooks is saying to get taken into consideration as far as the neighbors are concerned, you know, making sure we're trying to, because everybody's got to live there on the lake. So how can we live together and still appreciate that people are coming in, you know, buying new home, buying, th, this is their new home? You know, how do we, how do we allow them to change it up, modify, and, you know?
Well, and I'm saying this from both directions.
For both. Yeah.
Like, one day, you might want to do something on your property as well.
Right. Who knows? You might need, you might need some new siding. What happens then? You might need, you know?
And there's the possibility that some of these updates could actually improve fire, everything, given new construction materials.
Right. That's a, that's.
Or other.
Because that's what's required, regardless, regardless, that's, that's required now. So, um, that is very true. So, so Member Brooks, does that say that you're, uh, you're, you can meet criteria number four?
Yes.
Okay. Member Teresa.
The only question I heard was raised by one of the speakers tonight as far as a retaining wall in the back. And by removing the dirt to build in this addition, whether that retaining wall would be at risk. So I would be concerned about that.
Is that something that you could address, Ms. Wilborn? The retaining wall, where the, um, dirt pile is currently?
Right.
How, how is that being addressed?
Well, the structure there is already falling apart. I mean, there's, this was built with, looks like older wood. I don't think it was even treated with. So there's already some work that needs to be done for that retaining wall. Um, I'm already seeing kind of holes in the ground where it's kind of sinking in because of that dirt mound. So either way, I'd have to address it.
So you have to replace it?
Yeah, I mean, I have to replace those steps regardless, because they're, they're worn down. Yeah. I mean, I have to replace those steps regardless because they're worn down. They have holes in them.
And is that part of the plan that we have in front of us, or that?
Yeah, the plan is replacing that older deck, and part of those steps will be removed as well.
Does that satisfy the question, member Tresice? Or do you need, do you want to take a look at what we're, what we're?
I might ask Mr. Chapman if that can be part of the grant, that the retaining wall be repaired to be effective.
As an addition to?
Addition.
Or a condition of, rather?
A condition, yeah.
You could do it as a condition of approval.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would want to make sure, because that could impact the neighbors that are significantly worried.
I thought we were talking about the same retaining wall? The one that's by the dirt in the house, that stairs that go down? Is that the retaining wall you're referring to?
The retaining wall in the, on the lake side of the house on the south.
It's in the back?
In the back.
Yeah. Do you know what you're talking about?
Yeah, this one right here.
Okay. Is that what you're referring to, member Tresice?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so the retaining wall on the south side of your property.
No, we're not talking about that one.
So there's a retaining wall underneath this existing deck.
Oh, right, yeah.
In the middle of the house, like, so it's a walkout. So
Okay.
I'm sorry, I should.
Oh, I see it.
That is sliding door right next to the retaining wall, and that whole thing is completely rotten. It's falling into the walkway.
Where those stairs are, right?
Yeah, that towards, exactly.
Okay, okay. So where is the dirt mound?
That's like beyond that, where that, those stairs, a little bit further where the actual yard is.
Okay.
There's like a stair that goes down, goes into like a cement walkway after the lake. There's another wall there by the steps, and those are where those steps are rotting. So the remodel would have taken care of that part.
How far does that retaining wall go back toward the lake?
Not far, because you have, I'm talking about the retaining wall, I'm thinking of this right there where you go up to the lawn, is, to me, is not even near the, there's like two pieces of, there's like, there's a wall that's from the dirt mound, and then there's like another retaining wall in the middle of the yard that goes down to the lake. Now, that middle retaining yard, if we do the phase two and pushback, that part will be removed as well as the other retaining wall. Both are old, and they have not been well maintained. But there is more damage towards the one closer to the house because of the drainage, there was the spouts. They were not properly, I guess, going out to the yard as they should for the water.
Right.
So all that wood got rotted, and one of my retaining walls, the one he's talking about, that's about to fall over.
That's gone.
And that's the one up closer to the house?
Right, that's right there by the stairs, by the walkout.
Okay.
So I have to get that addressed.
So I guess I would, I would wonder which one we're referring to that we want to be specific and make a condition.
It wasn't spelled out in the comments.
In the comments, yeah.
But it was a concern to a neighbor that the retaining wall, I assumed it was between the properties.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
That was the one up here. Keith knows. That's this one right? Yep. That one.
Yeah, that's the one.
I guess that's.
That's the one you questioned. Why was it built on somebody else's property?
Uh, there's, there's not, I mean, I'm going off the record, but there's a, there's shrubs there, and there's, and there's a wall there, but I thought it was the other property owner's wall.
I don't know.
Because I had
It does appear to be on their land.
I didn't think that was mine.
Okay.
I thought my walkway from there was my property, not the wall between mine and yeah, that, I didn't think that was mine.
Okay.
It could be, but, I mean, we could look at getting that repaired, but
I don't think there's anything wrong with that.
No, there's not much damage there, because there's like, um,
The hard part to me
There's a walkway there, but I thought my property
It's hard to identify.
It's hard to identify, and I would
Oh, he can show it. He has it on his phone.
Okay.
The wall, I think that what she's referring to, that was, I want to put that back on. So there's like a wall there, this, this?
That's the one you're talking about.
That's my exact.
That's not what we're talking about, though.
Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna break my role, but Mrs. Davis, is that the retaining wall you were discussing?
That is the retaining wall that's on my property.
Is
Of the property's
Was that the concern?
No, in the front, sorry, at the lake side, maybe want to bump out the basement on the south side of that. Bridget McCarthy, sitting next to me, just lives on the south side, and they built a retaining wall, the whole back, all that dirt that's between the house and the lake.
Okay.
So it goes across the back of the yard?
It goes along the south
It is. Okay.
There's a, there's a, it's in the middle of the yard. I'm not aware of any
This one right here.
There's a
It's shown right here.
There's a fence there.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a fence. It's not a wall.
Yeah, it's
Right there.
I just have a question, though.
Okay.
Is the
There's a
That's the one I was looking at.
We're, yeah, we're referring to a photo that member Nahim has
I'm happy to bring it up to the
Yeah, has, was, visited the property and was able to take a picture. So if this is, if you could confirm, that's the wall we're talking about? Just because I don't want to put a condition without being specific and not
I understand.
Addressing
It's a fence.
The needs.
It's a fence. It's not a wall. It's a fence.
Okay.
And that fence, I definitely want to get that fence replaced.
Because this is his house, right?
Okay, all right.
The fence is mine, from my understanding.
Okay. Then why are we calling it retaining wall? Is this what we're referring to? Mrs. McCarthy?
It's this.
If you would like to come up to the podium, Mrs. McCarthy, and just give your name and address, only because I'm, I'm doing this and breaking my rule, because I think member Tresice would like to add a condition that will satisfy maybe the concerns in the neighborhood while also allowing the relief for Ms. Wilborn, so.
So I'm Bridget McCarthy, 60, 76, Columbia. So Teresa's right, the fences, well, I don't know for sure, but I assumed it's on her property. So when we moved in, her mound was there, so we had to build a retaining wall on our side, on the right side.
Oh, for your house. I got you. It's, it's
Because our backyard is flat.
This piece here.
This is, so we had to build the retaining wall.
Mm-hmm. That's right there.
To prevent her mound
This is her, not our side. Okay, okay.
Okay.
So you're standing back here looking that way.
Yep. That's helpful. Okay. Thank you very much, Mrs. McCarthy. Thank you, Ms. Wilborn. Okay. All right.
Seeing that, it appears that removing the dirt may remove the need for the retaining wall.
The need for the retaining wall, right. So there might not be a condition necessary.
Yeah, and it's not her retaining wall anyways.
Right, so it may be more the condition of removing the dirt.
Yes, and make sure that she doesn't undermine the retaining wall that's there.
Right, right. Okay.
Yep.
Member Brooks?
Are we, I don't, I haven't experienced this on this committee. So are we able to add a condition like that in this case, because we don't? No, I feel like we don't know enough about all this to say that, because like when you look at the photo that we have right here, the, there's a basement with a walkout, which may put the elevation of that area below the neighbor's yard? And so I don't, I don't know, is it a mound of dirt? Or is it that the elevation is, and the south property is actually below it?
They look, the backyard, it's a look at this about the same height. And I think the explanation was the retaining wall was put in that because there was a mound of dirt that was moving her way.
Right, but do we, I mean, do
I don't, I don't think we put a condition in there. It's just that she needs to be alert to not damaging her neighbor's property, that's all.
Okay, all right.
It's not a condition.
I think the condition was in thinking that the retaining wall was Ms. Wilborn's to maintain or improve, but it's not. It's not her, it's not her retaining wall.
I see. Okay.
So
Sorry.
I think that, I think, from what I'm hearing, that condition is not necessary.
Right, okay.
So, yeah. I don't, I, no, I, to answer the question, no, I don't think we can put a condition on removing dirt.
No.
But
Sorry, is this a
No, no, I don't think that's a condition that's, that's, that would be helpful. All right, so let's get back to criteria, and it looks like we are at criteria five, which is granting the variance will be generally consistent with public interest and the purposes and intent of this chapter.
This particular one, I think, probably meets that.
With regards to setbacks, variance only.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, allowing them to raise the roof primarily, is what I'm talking about, yeah.
Yes, I would, I, to me, I can, I can meet that criteria. I think that that, it is keeping within where we already are established on this, on this property, within the, within the very non-conforming situation we find ourselves in, in that neighborhood. And I think that despite all of our best efforts with that Lake Lansing overlay district, there's still going to be challenges. So I do, I do think that I can meet that criteria. So if I'm estimating properly with our, all of the discussions in between, that we are able to meet the five criteria? So, gentlemen, anybody have a motion? Or do we need to, we have any thoughts?
I would move to grant variance as requested with regard to the side yard setback incursion and the modification to raise the roof and build a deck pursuant to 86-442, per N5, per N B, that particular variance.
Support.
All right. So the motion on the top is to approve the variance for the side yard setbacks. Member Tresice brought forth, and member Nahim has supported. Any thoughts on the motion?
Can I ask a question, clarifying question?
Absolutely.
In your motion, you mentioned the word deck.
They were talking about building a deck over the sunroom, and that one is part of any change to something out of compliance with the code. So I just threw that in. It had nothing to do with the 42% or whatever. It has to do with the modification to the structure itself with those limitations.
Makes sense. It's for the clarification.
All right. If there's no further questions regarding the motion, I'm going to go ahead and put it up for a vote. It's a vote for the side yard setback variance to remain within the, let's see. It should be a variance that would be of two feet and 2.1 feet on either one of those Two feet and 2.1 feet. This is a vote to, vote for the motion. Member Brooks?
Sorry, can we just amend that, just to say that it's two feet on which side?
Two feet on
South side.
South side, and 2.1 feet on the
North.
North side.
Okay. I support.
Okay.
If you're still asking.
Member, yes, member Brooks. This is a vote for the motion with 2.1 setback on the south side, two feet on the north side.
Reverse them, yeah. I should have
I'm going to do this one more time. Member Canig, before you?
I'm sorry. I should, I should have asked this question before you guys made the motion, but I was thinking, for somebody down the road, when we're long gone, and Keith's still here now, and they look up this property and they say, what are the variances on this property? And someone says, two feet and 2.1, what does that relate to?
Yep.
It doesn't relate to the original structure. It relates to the new structure being built, corrected? Because this, right now, the setbacks on the original structure are 2.1 and 1.2. So should we clarify the motion to mean two feet on the, on the south, 2.1 on the north in relation to the new structure that's to be built?
We could be specific, sure.
Yes.
Why not?
Would it make sense to do that, I guess I'm asking? Otherwise, I think it can be confusing, because technically we have a non-conforming use, and then we have another, you see what I'm saying? We have two different sets of non-conforming setbacks. I just don't want anybody to be confused in the, in the future if someone needs to look at this petition or look at the property and go
Right.
What in the world are the variance pertaining to?
Mr. Chapman, from, from staff perspective, is that helpful to have the clarity?
Yeah, that's fine. That's
Okay.
I apologize for bringing that up late.
Okay, then, motion to approve with restate, member Canig? Motion to approve variance of 2.1 feet on
On the north property.
North property of new dwelling?
Structure. I would just say structure.
And
Remember Tresice was two, two feet on the south
And motion to approve
South property grant
On
For the new structure, yeah.
Of two feet on south.
One of the earlier variances, they stated, the granting of the variance was based on the site plan information as submitted. Any modification that would affect the intent of the variance would require the approval of the zoning board of appeals.
Any modifications?
Mm-hmm.
So
It's in our approval letter, so not
It's in your approval
It's in the approval letter anyways.
Yeah, that's all standard language that's in the ordinance.
It's standard. might this cause a challenge with the next variance? All right.
I just threw a big monkey wrench in that, didn't I?
Well, no, but my question would be, if they go back and we discuss percentage and plans change?
Well, if the plans change, they're probably going to be less incursion, because it's the point of the addition that goes the most into the setback.
The setback.
Yeah, there's, it wouldn't be increasing if you're going down in square footage.
Okay, so it won't impact. All right. All right. That's my question. Guys, think you're ready to vote?
Ready.
Okay, let's do it. Okay, this is a motion to support a variance to, or motion to approve a variance of 2.1 feet on north of the new structure and two feet on the south of the new structure. Member Brooks?
Yes.
Member Canig?
Yes.
Member Nahim?
Yes.
Member Tresice?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So the motion, or apologies, the variance for your setbacks has been granted. We will now move on to the percentage.
Okay.
Because I think that's where a lot of us felt that we had some, some thoughts and concerns. So, moving into the, the variance for the percentage. So I will get right into criteria, and we can go along that way. Criteria one, unique circumstances exist that are peculiar to land or structure that are not applicable to other land or structures in the same zoning district, and these unique circumstances are not self-created. So we're going from 40% maximum lot coverage. There is a variance already at 42%, and the proposed addition will cover 43.7. So this is where I have a challenge with unique circumstances, because there is already the ability to go up by that 2%. So
Well, I would say
Anybody make that case?
I would say it's unique because the property is still unique. It's shaped differently. I can go with number one.
Okay.
Because it hasn't changed the shape of the property.
It hasn't changed the, the circumstances that, yeah, the shape, the non-conforming structure, the other challenges that have
I would agree. I agree. It's also diagonal.
It is diagonal. It is
That's
Yeah, right on the side.
It didn't have satellite.
Right on the side, yeah. Right, yeah. Would have been helpful, but, okay. So we can meet unique circumstances. Number two is strict interpretation and enforcement of the literal terms and provisions of this chapter would result in practical difficulties that will prevent the owner from using the property for the permitted purpose.
I don't think we can meet this one.
That's, that's where I have, that's where I have a hard time.
Because she's already got a variance to 42% of the additional variance that's requested. The additional variance that's requested, I don't see, it hasn't shown me that strict interpretation of the variance she has would prevent her from doing what she wants to do.
Right. Yeah, that's, that's kind of where I land. I, I was, I've, I've been, I've been racking my brain to try to come up with a practical difficulty that would apply to this. And the, the, the difficulty with the roof line, that is, that, uh, that is easy to, easy to make an argument for. But going over that max coverage, when you already have the, the ability to go over quite a bit more than the neighbors. I mean, if everybody's held to that forty percent standard and you're going up to forty-three point seven, but you already, you already have a grace period, right? You already got a little bit of room, because you already have that forty-two percent.
May I ask a quick clarifying?
Yes.
So, is the, um, for the zone, you're saying the base is thirty-five percent, or for that area, the base is forty percent? Uh, Keith?
So for the Lake Lansing overlay, it's forty percent.
Okay, so it is forty percent for all the neighbors.
Right, right.
And, and we don't know for a fact at the moment that none of the other properties might have zoning.
Correct, yeah.
Variances.
Right. Right.
Like, we don't know.
Yeah. And that's, that, that's another really fun one, we try to look at that. It's like, how long do you want to have Keith in the, in the records looking for all the variances on all these houses? Um, yes, member Koenig.
Sorry, so that goes back to my original question that I jumped the gun when I was asking we're talking about, was that I, that was the question that I had was, it'd be different if I felt the applicant came up and said, you know, I want to build this. I cannot build it in a way that requires anything less than decrease that coverage to forty-three point seven percent. You make me do forty-three point six, I can't build a draw. Therefore, you know, you can argue there's a hardship. I didn't get, I didn't hear a reason why it needs to be forty-three point seven and why it can't be cut back to forty-two.
Um, I can provide one. I think the, the current size that he built around there, I thought he said there was a rule that it had to be so much feet from the sun spot to walk around it. So I think that's why Roger, the architect, built, um, additional space. And then also to, you have to exit from it, from a safety perspective, from the sun spot, there's an exit, um, door, sliding door there.
So you're saying the spa itself needs to be a certain distance away from the, from the main house?
And, and I think, what I heard is walking around. Walking around. Navigating.
So it's got to be a certain distance away from a previous structure in order to go around.
Is that code, Mr. Chapman? Is that like building code?
Uh, it's probably building code, I'm not sure.
I don't know.
Okay.
Anything about that?
Now, all, all I can say is it wasn't presented.
Right.
Any way to argue it here now. If she wants to hold this in advance and come with further information.
Yeah.
We could do that, give her the chance to do that.
Yeah.
But.
I can take it back to the architect and ask why he.
Yeah.
Designed it that way.
Um, I, only because I'm looking, I, I mean, I can, I can go back, let me, let me go back here. Because we need to be able to reach all five of our criteria, meet all five of our criteria in order to grant a variance. And if we can't get back, press, get past practical difficulties, I'm, I'm going to say in number three, granting the variance as the minimum action, I would also have a struggle with. Because we already have, we, yeah, the same struggle.
I don't have enough proof that it is the minimum action, that's my original, yeah, original question.
And, um, you know, even if we can meet four and five, that will not adversely affect, and it will be consistent with public interest. Not being able to meet that practical difficulties in the minimum action, because we don't have enough information on it. So, um, I, so the, the, needing that space because it is within that building code, that could be something that tells us, oh, well, we're building this and we have to do this for safety standards, just like the egress window, right? Those are things that we can, we can concretely look at and say, there's, there's a legitimate reason why we need to have this space versus, well, it looks pretty, you know? The, which, you know what I'm saying? But we just don't have that, that in front of us to, um, to use to make our decision. Yes, member Brooks.
I didn't think that the, this swimming part was part of the forty-three point seven percent, though. I thought the, that that was already covered by the setbacks.
No.
And it's the basement.
Yeah, yeah.
It's the extension of the basement, that has a roof, that's going to be under it.
Yeah.
So that's where, that's where the coverage is, is the additional roof.
Right.
That covers that.
I see.
I'm actually ready to make a motion, Ms. Chair.
Okay.
And if nobody else has any other questions, if you want to check first.
Okay. Anybody else have any thoughts before, okay, member Koenig, go ahead.
I would make the motion that we postpone this section of ZBAC case number twenty-five dash ten related to the variance request to extend the lot coverage in order to give the applicant and/or her representative a chance to discuss to see if there's a way to reduce the amount of coverage down to the already approved forty-two percent.
I'll support that.
Okay. Thoughts on the motion? So, um, uh, go ahead, member Brooks.
Oh, I support that as well, and I just wanted to make a request that if you do come back up, can you try and provide as much detail as possible about what you're requesting and why you're requesting it? And, and sort of tell us a story about that a little bit.
All right.
That would be helpful.
Okay. All right, any other thoughts on postponement? So the, the motion that was put forward is to postpone that portion of the case, so not to deny it, give you a chance to come back with information regarding it, so that you can take a look at it and, and make, it's. With, with what we have in front of us, it would be a denial. So I think that this is a way to give, give you, Ms. Wilborn, the chance to be able to come back and say, this is why. But also maybe to go back to the architect and say, can we keep this within that forty-two percent? Or if not, where can we, you know, um, make some of those concessions so that we can see that it, it falls within what's, what's already allowed?
And that's the three-seven-four D? Or is that the eight-six-four-four-two?
Eight-six-four-four-two.
It's eight-six-four-four-two. Out of four. Yep, the maximum lot coverage. Um, so that, that goes, if we look back down, um, that is, um, that site plan that has that additional square feet, that coverage, that's what we're discussing. Okay.
And I believe we, don't mind, Ms. Chair, I'm sorry.
Nope, go for it.
I'm on a roll, I'm sorry.
Nope, I, hey.
I don't believe, I, I, well, I believe the deadline for someone applying for the December meeting is probably already come and gone, because you said we're not having one. So, the earliest would be a January meeting, bring that back, so that'll give you.
Some time.
Give you some time to talk and do your research and see what you can come up with and come back.
Okay. All right, okay, now we can ask about the roof, because that, that I wanted to get started on.
Can we do this in two parts? Because obviously, raising that roof does not encroach on the forty-two or forty-three. Is there a way to look at this to have a more compelling story for the, just kind of to phase this for just the sauna addition?
So the side yard setback was, was, um, allowed, so we, we did grant the variance for the side yard setback.
So the roof can be raised?
It includes the roof.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify that, I thought that was, okay.
Um, but regarding the.
So Keith would be sending out a partial approval.
A partial, yeah, approval for one of the two, um, variances.
Okay.
Okay. This is a vote to postpone, um, ZBAC case number twenty-five-ten in regards to section eighty-six dash four-four-two-four, maximum lot coverage. All right. Member Brooks.
Yes.
Member Koenig.
Yes.
Member Naheem.
Yes.
Member Trezaius.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so we are going to pro, postpone the, um, the maximum lot coverage part of the case. Okay. Give you the opportunity to come back and, and, uh, make a more compelling case for that. And your side yard, yeah, setback variance has been approved. Got it, okay. Thank you very much, thank you very much to the community, we really, we do appreciate, and I appreciate you following, following my, my strict rules and also coming up when, when asked. And we do appreciate that it's, it's difficult, this is, it's a very difficult, um, thing to, you know? Knowing, knowing that all the houses are so close together, knowing that everybody is concerned and, and wants to make sure that it's safe. And, um, I just encourage all of you to, to talk to each other, talk to your neighbors, get to know each other, reach out, you know? I, I think Ms. Wilborn has good intentions to bring her house up to a, a nice, uh, a nice home that, um, can be part of that, part of that area, so, I'm sorry.
I think that we would have an opportunity to.
We, we do have public comment at the end of the meeting, yeah. Yep. Nope, we have two more cases. Yeah, all right.
Can I ask for a clarification on two point one feet, is that all the way along the property line, and the two, is it just at that point?
Just at that.
Just at that point.
According to the site plan.
Yeah, according to the site plan.
It's what is shown on the plan.
Yeah, so according to the site plan that, that is in, in the packet. That two point one foot is on the south side.
So the, uh, I said one of is within that two point one feet? Or if it needs to be within that two point one foot?
Yes. Yep.
Because that's already on the lot.
What, what is according to the site map is, is what we have granted. What's our, what's, what's currently there is, it's, it's not getting bigger than what it, what is currently there, and what's listed on the site, site plan. All right.
Can I make a request for brief recess?
Yes, let's pause. Small recess.
Started trying to make comments, drink, yeah.
Really?
We, we recognize for a tri-county meeting. Yeah, that we noticed, and we were like, nah, it's not normal, that's not a real person.
All right. It's, yeah, it's getting weird, it's getting weird. All right, well, we're back. Can you, can you see my friend in the hall?
No, he, he walked back to his office.
Okay.
He'll come back and probably give you a soundup, let me just.
We're ready to get back in session, will you, our friend? It just gets.
Already didn't beat my record.
No. I knew it was going to be long. I didn't know it was going to be this long, but I knew it was going to be long. Those are always. But they're few and far between now. I think that helped, I think the, I think the change in the overlay district helped.
Yeah, because, because the regular RB zone.
Yeah.
Which is the zoner and the minimum lot width is sixty-five feet.
Right.
This, this lot was forty feet.
Yeah.
Versus the overlay, it's thirty-five feet.
Right.
So they would have been non-conforming to lot width, so, yeah, the overlay zone did do a lot of.
Are we good to go?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All right, I'm going to call this meeting back to order, it's eight fourteen, we're getting back into our regular, um, session with our next case in new business. That will bring us to ZBAC case number twenty-five dash ten, forty-five, if, forty-six fifty Moore Street, Oakland, Michigan, four-eight-eight-six-four. Mr. Chapman, take it away.
Yeah, the applicant's requesting to install a sixteen-square-foot, five-point-six-foot-tall freestanding sign at forty-six fifty Moore Street. Um, property is approximately point three acres in size and is owned professional office. On site is an existing three thousand eighty-eight square foot office building built in nineteen seventy-three. Um, section eighty-six six-eight-six two A states freestanding signs shall be permitted in the front yard and located at least ten feet from the front. Inside property lines, uh, the applicant is requesting to install a freestanding sign approximately one foot from the street right away. Therefore, a nine-foot variance is requested.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chapman. Would the applicant representative like to come up and talk about this case? Which one of it, which one do you as a sign? Go up on this side.
They're both.
They're both signs.
Both signs, I know. Which sign company do we have today?
I'm Ron Holesworth from Foresight SuperSign, I'm the contractor on the project. And, yes, we're looking for a 9-foot variance for this freestanding sign. It is located on a 90-degree corner on the outside of that corner, backing up to Woodlands and the River. So, we don't expect it to be an impedance to any surrounding area. And there's a substantial amount of driveway there that we would hope to avoid having to tear up. Hence, the variance requests.
Thank you very much, Mr. Holesworth, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Okay. Anybody want to get started? I drove past the property and I couldn't see anywhere else where you could possibly put a sign. That wasn't in concrete. So, based on that alone, I was like, yeah, okay, that sounds pretty doable to me. I, yeah, I guess the only question I really had was, what happened to the old sign?
The old sign, from what I've seen in old views and aerials, was actually in the U-shaped part of the driveway, which was no longer there. I'm not sure when it was removed, but appeared to be severely inside the right-of-way. So, I don't know if it was ever permitted or not.
Right.
And that would be way inside too far.
I was just curious, where did that come from? No, nobody's claiming that one, right? Nobody's claiming that sign to the middle of nowhere. Got it.
Probably couldn't without a permit, be my guess.
Right, somebody just put that sign right up there. All right, well, that was my question, because as I was driving, I said, well, where would the old sign have been?
It seemed like a good spot, but, yeah, it's too close.
But it's way too close and just, yeah. Where, yeah, where it could do some damage. Okay, that was my question. Any other thoughts, concerns, questions? Yes.
Oh, yeah, I also visited the site and actually talked with some of the people in the office complex. And it does, the reason they want to locate it right there is that site is also visible from the cross streets as well. And so, I think it's a very reasonable place to put it. I actually had a hard time finding the place when I first driving to it.
I drove past it.
There wasn't any signage.
I drove past thinking it was a house. And I thought, why don't I know that there's an office building back there? Because I was thinking it was the one that was on Hamilton. And I came around to the yellow house and I went, oh, that's a house. Wait, what's that? Oh, is that where we're talking about? I drove past it three times.
Designed well.
I'm sure that the neighbors in the yellow house were like, what is this person doing? And just kept driving by. But, yeah, it's, it is very necessary. So, I could definitely make the case for public interest. Yes, the members of the vice.
I was just wondering, how far is that off the paved road? It's kind of hard for me to picture that.
I know it's 33 feet from the center of the road to the right-of-way.
And so, you're within your property line, though?
Yes, yeah.
So, if I look at the picture with the red surround, the line in front of the building would be your property line. And that looks quite a ways from the roadway itself.
Yep, that red area would be the typical required setback anywhere there and further towards the structure. So, we're just inside of that.
Okay.
All right. Well, I'm going to take a look at criteria then, since we seem to have a pretty easy. All right, here we go. Number one is unique circumstances exist that are peculiar to the lander structure that are not applicable to other lander structures in the same zoning district. And these unique circumstances are not self-created. I can meet that quite easily. Any thoughts on it not being unique? Yes, member.
I was just going to add that if you take that sign away from where it's being proposed and put it at the closest place within that 10 feet, looking at that, it's basically at the top of the bank. It's what it says, "top of bank." So, looking at these pictures, I think it would pretty much be almost in the woods.
Yeah, you wouldn't be able to see it from the road.
And you'd be worried about, you know, 20 years from now, is the thing going to fall over because the ground is going to give way? Yada, yada. So, it definitely, to me, it looks like there's unique circumstance. Everything else is just, you know, behind the driveway and where you can't see it. So, I would agree with your assessment of unique circumstance.
Yeah. If we get any further back, you're going to get into the flood plain. We're going to have a whole other variance on our hands.
Versus far back to the building to where you can't even see it.
Right.
You have to put it behind the parking lot. And then, you're 50 feet off the property line and doesn't make much sense to put a sign back there.
Absolutely. All right, wow. Okay.
It could be put in the parking lot.
It could be put in the parking lot. And then, you'd be driving and go, oh.
Did you run over it?
Yeah, once you hit it, you know that you're at the right spot. All right. Well, let's try to avoid that one, shall we?
Yeah.
Criteria number two is strict interpretation and enforcement of the literal terms and provisions of this chapter would result in practical difficulties that would prevent the owner from using the property for the permitted purpose. I can meet that. I do think you need a sign to tell people where to go.
I would agree to read again, because of the top of the bank and the closest area. It'd make it very difficult to you put a sign there for the purpose of advertising.
It would make it absolutely impossible to put a sign there to actually, to represent and give the sightlines that are needed to be safe and not run into it in the parking lot.
Or to let people know that it is a business and not a house.
It is a business and not a house. That is also helpful.
I'm confused.
Yeah.
Why? So, based on the image on the screen, so why can't the sign go where the original one is?
It's in the right-of-way.
Yeah, the original one's.
It's on the property.
Yeah. That's the blue line. So, there's like.
The smallest island, I guess you would say, is where it was located. And even more to the left, I totally, I did mark it on there.
This blue line is the property line. You can't put a sign out on your property in the road right-of-way.
Okay, I see. I was trying to look at the images on Google Maps while I'm also looking at this, so.
I had to go back to maybe 2012, I think that sign showed up.
To see that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, there's no sign of it today. I mean, you can't see where it might have been. Other than, yeah, that's kind of like a little island for the drive, like in and out of the parking lot.
Okay, I see. That makes sense then.
Yeah, yeah, there's really no, I mean, I suppose you could put it on the inside of one of those islands. But again, that's kind of right-of-way and where you're pulling in to park.
It'd have to be like right there.
But even there, that one spot.
But all you're doing is you're just keeping it on the property and the grass.
Right.
You're still, because 90% of that grass is outside of the setback anyway, so it wouldn't have mattered.
Right, right.
Does the township, Keith, do you know, does the township allow off-site signs?
Yeah, I think there's an approval process, though, off-premise signs.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a whole approval process to it, but I think it is allowed.
But it's probably on private property and not public right-of-way.
Not public right-of-way.
Like a muck enough.
Yeah.
A lot of municipalities have off-site sign or off-premise sign ordinances, but they're very restrictive. I mean, you have to get permits and explain why you need to put a sign, not on your property, but typically it's on another private property, not in a right-of-way.
Right.
Because if you put it in the right-of-way, the road commission can come by and just take it out of there whenever they feel like it. Not that they're going to move a 500-pound brick, 9-foot sign, but they could if it was there.
Depends on the plowman.
Exactly. They would have a right to do that, unfortunately.
Right. Yeah, I mean, just looking at it, it doesn't make much sense that it could go anywhere else. All right, so let's see. Criteria number three is granting the variance is the minimum action necessary that would carry out the spirit of the zoning ordinance, secure public safety, and provide substantial justice. And I can meet that criteria. So, thoughts, concerns on three? Okay. Criteria number four is granting the variance will not adversely affect adjacent land or the essential character in the vicinity of the property. I could also meet that quite easily. And criteria five is granting the variance will be generally consistent with the public interest and the purposes and intent of this chapter. And, yep. I can meet all five criteria quite easily. So. Anybody got a motion?
I move as Dewey Grant. Variance requested to section 86-686, print two, print A, allowing a freestanding sign to be built within the 10-foot setback required by that section. And granting a 9-foot variance to build 1 foot from the roadway right-of-way. That's a ZBA case 25-11 at 4650 MORE STREET, Oakhamis, Michigan. Support.
All right. Any other thoughts, concerns, questions? All right, this is a motion to approve the variance as presented in the packet. Member Brooks.
Sorry.
Yep.
Did we request a 1-foot variance?
Within 1 foot, a 9-foot variance within the road right-of-way.
All right, okay, just wanted to make sure. I support.
Okay, member Kane?
Yes.
Member Naham?
Yes.
Member Trizeis?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So, your variance has been approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being so patient, too, through the. All right. And moving on. The most patient one of the night. All right, let me scroll all the way down in the packet. There we go. This is. ZBA case number 25-124990 Marsh Billcar Signs out of Flint, Michigan. Mr. Chapman, go for it.
Yeah, the applicant is requesting a variance to install a second wall sign at 4990 Marsh Road. The property is owned C2 Commercial. The current building is going to be demolished for a new 2,700-square-foot Panda Express. So, businesses are allowed one wall sign on each building facade with frontage on a public street. Wall signs are allowed up to a size equivalent of 1 square foot for each linear foot of building frontage where there is an individual means of public access. So, the subject site is located on the east side of Marsh Road. The west elevation of the building has frontage on a public street, Marsh Road. The applicant is requesting to install two wall signs, one on the west and one on the south facades of the building. The one on the west is proposed to be 34 square feet, which contains 42.5 linear feet of frontage on Marsh Road. And a second sign, which is 36 square feet, is proposed on the south facade, which contains 65.66 linear feet with no road frontage. A variance to install an additional wall sign on the south facade is requested.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Chapman. Would you like to come on up? You're the last person in our audience, so join us at the podium, state your name and address for the public record, please, sir.
My name's James Cool. I'm with Billcar Signs out of Flint, Michigan. Basically, I'm here on behalf of Panda Express. And they'd like to add the second wall sign to their location to stick within their branding guidelines.
Okay. All right, anything to add that wasn't already covered or you ready to take some questions?
I'll take some questions.
Get into the hot seat, right?
Yeah.
Okay. In that case, I will go ahead and close public comment and open up board time. And thoughts, questions, concerns? I mean, I will say, the question that's always going to come up, and we dealt with this, we deal with this a lot, with all our newer brands that come into the township, is that why we need a sign on a non-frontage road? So, do you have any guidelines that you've been given as to why they request both signs? Because I will only say, because I know I can read some of your minds already, not having the frontage on that south side.
Yep.
There's, we usually make an argument for a secondary sign based on public safety, like, you know, wanting to be able to find the business without causing any kind of traffic issues, concerns. There's nothing around that. So, it doesn't lend to, and I, apologies, because I don't know that it was clear in the packet. Is there a freestanding sign?
Yes.
Okay, so there's a freestanding sign and there's the sign that's allowed on the frontage, on the marsh sign. Is that, is the one we're looking at now, that elevation, that's the west elevation?
This is the south.
Oh, south, okay, so this is the.
The requested.
The requested, okay. All right.
Which looks like it's the main entrance. And that's probably why they're requesting a sign there, because the main entrance looks like it faces south.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so the main entrance is south, which faces the parking lot. That makes more sense. With the frontage being on marsh, similar to our friends over at the specialty grocery store.
That's what I was going to say without putting that on the record.
Similarly to our specialty grocery store friends. That's why I'm wondering. Thank you for asking the question. Yeah, okay, well, that gives a little bit more clarity. Anybody else have questions or thoughts?
I guess my thought is that the the building had to be redesigned based on, this is not how the building structure was that was previously there. And so, it's been reshaped this way. And I don't. I guess I'm like. We talked about this in the planning commission as well, in that the building was reshaped and redesigned. And then, more parking lot spaces were added than what seemed reasonable. It seemed like there was plenty of space on the lot to design this how it was necessary to fit in the code. And so, seeing it now is sort of.
Frustrating?
Yeah, because now we're here talking about this. The, I mean, I get wanting to have, I totally understand wanting to have a sign on the front of the main entrance.
On the entrance.
But it's also, there's going to be a freestanding sign. Have we ever done something where we move a sign from the front of a, like the street-facing side to the front or the entrance?
So, to not have the front, I think it would still require a variance, right? For the sign, for us to permit one sign, but for it to be on.
Yeah, yeah.
To be on.
There's no frontage, so you have to, you need a variance regardless.
Right.
But, I mean, so I think what you're saying is like, are you saying that's the only sign you get? Like, you don't get another one where it's permitted?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I'm saying move the where it's permitted sign to the seemingly more important location.
It looks like this property was designed to have a drive-through primarily.
Yeah, Keith, if you scroll up in the packet, you can show the.
The next one, yeah.
Yeah, there we go. So, sign one being the frontage, S1 is frontage to Marsh Road. S2 is over the entrance door. You can see S8 out there is the pylon sign, the freestanding sign. So. And that one will be, you know, obviously, visible from Marsh Road from both directions. Because I'm assuming that freestanding sign is double-sided.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
And this has a double drive-through, is probably why.
Okay, and then it has the two lane.
Yep.
Okay. Which seems like that could have been the the case for the additional parking, is we're moving vehicles through here, kind of. But, right, we're, right.
If I had to guess, Ms. Chair, that's probably because if you look at the property,
Right.
larger side of the property is toward the bottom.
It's towards the bottom.
And I'm sure the township probably said, you know, minimum parking requirements, there's so many parking spaces you need to have with this.
Right.
So, if you were to turn the building 90 degrees to the right clockwise and make it the same shape as what the current, or the old jewelry building is, you'd have to wrap that drive-through around the south side of the building, which would probably cut a ton of that parking out.
Yep.
And my guess is the township probably. And my guess is the township probably came down on them and said, you need to provide enough parking, therefore they probably had to twist the building. And I'm guessing that your client said, well, we, we still want to have something on that side of the building, otherwise you got hundred fifty feet of parking in between here and there, and nobody's gonna know what this building is when I pull in.
Yep.
Not that it makes it right, but.
No, but it's here.
Right.
Yeah.
But I understand, sorry, you guys had it the planning commission.
Yeah, especially if they, if they looked at it and that was.
Especially looking at this and seeing that there are parking spots, it's like, oh my gosh.
Well, there's actually, I believe, if I recall correctly, there's more parking spots than are, than the code required.
Oh, we just reduced the number that the code required.
Yeah.
Right, that's the thing, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because the code probably still says minimum parking requirements, so you have to have a minimum number, and if they go over, they go over.
Get a variance to have more than that, certainly not two.
Really?
Yeah.
We had to give, we had to give Trader Joe's a variance for parking.
Oh, I don't remember that.
Yeah, to add additional parking, yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
So that's just my thought.
Okay.
On the, on the sign.
Yeah. Understandable frustration.
So one quick comment, like, a number of the other fast food restaurants along Marsh Road also have just a single large frontage, even when their parking lots are to the side. And so, you know, just noting in the neighborhood that that isn't something that the other similar businesses have requested.
Does Culvers have two signs? Google Earth it.
Well, you can argue, because this board just approved three signs for similar situation for Ashley Furniture.
Culvers has, I know Culvers has an electronic message sign.
What's that?
They have an electronic message sign, I know.
Culvers does, well, but in the, on the pylon sign, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, yes, but I think, but Ashley, remember, Ashley Furniture has two entrances, and then, but the frontage is on, on, it's not where the entrance is.
Yeah, it's on.
So, I mean, similar, but.
Yeah, I was just talking, like Wendy's, the KFC, the other ones right nearby only have a single sign.
Only have a single sign, yeah. All right, so here's, here's the, here's the question. I mean, obviously, this, this development's already in place, the build's coming down, this is going up regardless of the sign, right? So what is the, I guess the, oh, it does. Well, no, that's the frontage, it has one side, it doesn't have one on the other side. Does it have one on the, on the other side of the parking lot?
I don't think it does.
I don't.
I have two, I just don't, I don't recall ever seeing it. Now we're gonna all pay attention to it next time we go there to eat, that's for sure.
Trying hard with Street View.
Yeah, Street View's struggling.
Oh, man, Street View is just.
Those trees are.
Not letting you be great, Keith.
I don't think there's a sign, I don't think there is either.
Man. Culvers might have just done it. All right.
We can't treat that as, as a precedent.
No, it's not, it's not, but I'm just, I mean, I think it's, it's fair to say, there are other, there are other places that don't. I mean, I'll be honest, I'm, I'm in bed, let me either way, I could, I could make a loose case for, for, you know, substantial justice and getting people in the front door, and could probably go that way. It's, it's the staying with the, staying with the property part of it, that's, because something else goes in there, and it's, take up a little bit more space on that side, and they can put up that, that sign within the, with the square footage based on the frontage.
We did do something like this for the ice rink.
For the cube, yeah, yeah. We had a condition. I feel like it was a size condition.
Oh, well, it was a variance, there were some size.
Because that, because that was so large. Um, I, yeah, I mean, I, I, I do, I hear Member Brooks's frustration on it for sure, but I also feel like, is it?
I guess.
Is it a minimum, is it a minimum action? Should I go through the criteria?
Go through criteria and I'll probably answer some of those.
Is it unique circumstances, gentlemen, that's where we're at? Is this a unique circumstance? That's not self-created.
Yeah, that was the part that was gonna get you.
That's the hardest part, that it's not self-created, because if we know the providence of the, the parcel and how it came to be, that shines light on it, it was in fact self-created.
Yeah, there were a lot of ways to design this.
But it's also here, and it's been approved outside of signage. So in every other way, this has been through planning, this has been through the board, this has been through building, and now we're at, this is going up the way it is, and it's got one last hurdle to cross. So. Now that it's been approved, is it self-created?
Can I ask the other a question?
What's that?
Could I ask Keith the question?
Yes.
Keith, with site plans, when the developer comes in with a site plan for a non, for a non-residential use, do they have to submit like a sign plan as part of that site plan?
They do, but it doesn't get approved until they submit for permits. So like, we'll send them comments saying, you know, if this sign doesn't meet the requirements, you're gonna need a variance.
Gotcha, okay.
Which is what happened in this case.
Gotcha, yeah.
Yeah, like, everything else has been approved, it's.
What I figured and what I was hoping he was not gonna say, but I, by reg election, I, I, that's what I've seen other local governments do as well, so.
Yes. Yeah.
Oh, that's interesting.
Because they do a lot of, a lot of local agencies do it with landscaping as well. You have to submit a landscaping plan, but you can say, I'm gonna put ten buses here and fifteen there, but till they go out and approve, go out and do an inspection as part of the building permit, that's, that's approved then.
Yeah.
But it all depends on the municipality, that's beside the point.
All right, so can we meet unique, unique circumstances? We're all fading fast, I can tell, I know. So can we meet unique circumstances, gentlemen?
I don't know.
Here's a question, what happens if the sign isn't approved from a, from a, a building perspective?
Um, I don't really know, until we go back to Panda and their branding, that's, it's their guidelines.
Right.
So it's like, it's every building is kind of cookie cutter, built the same. So I'm sure at some point, they've been denied somewhere.
Right.
So they might have an alternate design, but this is their most common.
Right. Yes, member Kaneck?
Being the area where this is, and the type of use that's being proposed, normally, I wouldn't have a problem with this. You know, there's no residential buildings around here, it's not like necessarily this is gonna negatively impact anybody having a Panda, I would call it Giant Panda for some reason, Panda Express sign above the front door. However, if this board is legally bound to these five criteria, then I'm not so sure number one can be met. Because I, I myself, as one vote on here, do see there is a hard, it's hard to beat number one, that there's a unique circumstance that requires this use to put a sign where they want to put it. I don't see, I don't see the argument for the need to put that sign there.
Same with number two.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
I mean, minimum variance, that, that could be argued, that's the minimum size, because you sign all that. Oh, look, benefit, you already mentioned it meets that, and I'm not trying to skip ahead, Ms. Chair, but.
No, but I, I would agree, I, I'm gonna have a hard time meeting criteria number two. And cri- criteria three, I can, I can argue for minimum action. I can say yes, I, I think it will not adversely affect the adjacent land or character, and I could say that it it is consistent with public interest, obviously, this was, you know, what the township wanted and, and to bring in and proved. So I think it, it can meet criteria three, four, and five, it's just the one and two is where, where I struggle. And I would agree with you, that's where, you know, the legally binding of the criteria is, we gotta be able to meet it. So, with that said, do we? Do we want to make a motion, or do we want to?
I think we ought to.
Give our applicant time, or?
At the very least, we need to, if we're going to make a motion, we need to state the results from each criteria as you go.
Yeah. Well, I will say, I, I cannot meet criteria number one, so.
Nor can I.
I think that we're unanimous in not being able to meet the unique circumstances of this case. And that criteria number two, the practical difficulties, again, I, I'm, that's, that's where I'm unable to meet. The criteria is just not finding that it's not going to allow the owner to use the property for the permitted purpose. So I can't meet criteria number two. Anybody that can? So, criteria number three, granting the variance is a minimum action necessary that would carry out the spirit of the zoning ordinance, secure public safety, and provide substantial justice. I can meet that criteria. And criteria number four, granting the variance will not adversely affect adjacent land or the essential character of the vicinity of the property. I can meet that criteria, I think we all would agree on that one. Uh, criteria number five, granting the variance will be generally consistent with the public interest and the purposes intended of this chapter, I think this is what, that I can, I can meet that criteria, I think this is what the township was, was hoping for, to have a nice new business in the township, however.
I have a different opinion on that one.
Okay.
I actually think we have the, the sign ordinance in place in order to create a consistent character across the township, and so.
So you cannot meet that criteria.
Cannot.
Because it's not consistent with.
Yeah, and if we look at other businesses of similar style on Marsh Road specifically, there, clearly the signs are much, there are just not very many there.
Yep, well, and I think that was, that's not a very intentional move in the township over the years, so. All right, so with that, with, with light of not being able to reach criteria number one and two, I guess I would, I would throw it back to you for a moment, is it something that there's likely a solution for with, with Panda?
Alls I can do is go to their branding and marketing and see what they say, I don't really know the answer to that.
Okay.
Yeah, because if there is a motion denied, then they can't come back for a year. To reapply for the same type of vote.
Right.
If they change the variance, though, they could ask to be reheard. So.
They, they can't come back and ask for these.
The same one, it's correct.
Right.
They'd have to make the sign smaller or bigger, whatever.
Right.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I, I'm not a, not a huge fan of having lots of old business. So as much as, you know, I know we postponed earlier and like to get, get us a chance to have more information, I don't know that that's gonna serve well in this case. So I, I, I don't know that if we say, let's, let's put a pause on it and come back, that it's gonna be that much different, that, and something's gonna change in those, those areas that we can't meet, the unique circumstances and the practical difficulties. So in light of that, does anybody have a motion? They could change, right, so, so Panda might come back, like you said, and have a solution and say, well, then, we can do this, this version, or this, you know, what have you, but.
Yeah, they couldn't, they couldn't reapply for the exact same request for more than a year.
The, the sign on the south side of the property.
Oh, the number, gotcha.
I remember. I move to deny ZBA case number twenty-five twelve for property four-nine-nine-zero Marsh for the variance request to have an additional sign on the south side of the Panda Express building. So.
I think that's adequate.
Support.
Okay. Thoughts on this motion, anything else need to be added? Okay, this is a vote to deny variance request for ZBA case number twenty-five dash twelve. Member Brooks?
Support.
Member Kaneck?
Yes.
Member Naham?
Yes.
Member Truice?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes to deny, so unfortunately, this has been denied, I would think, I hope that Panda has a solution. And just based on those two, those two circumstances, it being the self-created on unique circumstances, and based on those practical difficulties, so we appreciate how patient you've been all night.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming and hanging out with us all night. Hey, we didn't, we didn't do it alone, we had our, had our friend here the whole time, so we appreciate you being here, thank you so much for your time. All right. And finally, woo! This is a kicker, all right. Finally, we have our last business on the agenda for today, which is to establish, establish the 2026 meeting calendar. So looking at it as presented, looks good to me as presented, but who knows what 2026 holds for any of us, right?
Especially with one of the dates being tax day.
Well, is that something we wanna?
No.
Adjust?
No.
Okay, everybody's good with tax day, everybody knows what they're doing on April fifteenth, okay. All right, I, I do not see any challenges with this in particular. Here's hoping that does not fall in conferences again. I will not be here. Uh, but other than that.
You can do them all by Zoom from here.
Oh, man. It might be a little bit more interesting for, for some of my family. All right, so I can move to approve the 2026 meeting calendar as presented.
Support.
Supported by Member Brooks. Any thoughts, concerns, questions, member Kaneck?
I would just add to your motion to approve it by resolution.
Okay.
That's all.
I would move to approve the 2026 meeting calendar by resolution. And that was supported by Member Brooks. Oh, thank you, it's there, I just didn't read it. I didn't read the whole thing. Got it, all right. This is a vote to a, to adopt the resolution approving the 2026 zoning board of appeals meeting schedule, Member Brooks.
Yes.
Member Kaneck?
Yes.
Member Naham?
Yes.
And Richard Zeiss?
Yes.
And Chairman Sora votes yes, so the 2026 meeting calendar has been adopted. And I think we had nobody stay for public comment. Darn, missed out on that extra special, uh, public comment, so I will close the public comment floor, open it for board remarks. Anybody have anything they want to add? Or is everybody just ready to go home? Member Kaneck?
I, I just, you know, as usual, just appreciate all the comments, I think as a board, we do pretty good with our comments and questions and trying to, you know, ask a lot of things to get more clarity, I, I'm, I'm always impressed with the questions that are asked by this board, so. And you, Ms. Chair, you always do a good job, knowing that there's sometimes some very potential controversial topics, you do a good job making sure that's all wrangled in, so things can get out of hand very quickly sometimes, and.
Thank you. All right, yeah.
In other words, when it comes time for the
ended it well.
Time around for the nominated officers, you know where that's leading.
Okay, all right. He just doesn't want to be in charge to tell the people to stop talking. Although I did, I had my stopwatch going, because I realized too late that you had the timer, so.
Does, I mean, I, I assume it works, because it's on, I mean, if you need to, I can do it.
But I, and I did, but we didn't talk about it before, and then I noticed, I was like, that's where it is, because I looked here and I didn't see it. So had my, I had my stopwatch going on my, on my phone, but I do appreciate everybody, you know, being respectful, we're all able to share our, our opinions respectfully, and ask our questions and stay curious without being judgmental, which is really helpful. And I think it helps to calm the temperature in the room and allow people to kind of meet their neighbors and talk to each other, because ultimately, that's what it's about, and, you know, we can't, we can't solve their And, you know, we can't, we can't solve their neighborhood squabbles. We, they, they need to be able to make, make it work. So I know Member Brooks mentioned that earlier, and I think that's key, right? Like there, that, at some point, everybody's gonna have to paint the side of their house, fix their shrubs or whatever it is, and you gotta be able to talk to each other. So I'm glad that we can serve as that kind of bridge to, to that community because lord knows that Lake Lansing community can be a little tense, so. Glad we're here to help.
And emotions, unfortunately, emotions don't count with this board because our decisions need to be
Yep.
Based on, what's the term, substantial competent evidence?
Yep, we're looking at the facts.
As far as I do issue, if it's legislation, then we can take motions in the key.
Yeah, yeah.
Say, I don't like color that fence, I'm gonna deny it and request denial, but we can't do that in this type of board, so.
Absolutely not. We're looking at the facts, just the facts. All right, on that note, unless anybody has a, has a problem or wants to stay a little later, this meeting is officially adjourned. Eight fifty-six, guys, that's a new one.
Keith was highlighting with his marker on the time there to.